Everybody good now?
Mine's alright. Is mine supposed to speak?
I can hear you, so I know you're here.
Okay.
Alright, let's call this meeting to order. Please stand and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, well, so we will move on to 2.0, the agenda table. Any items may be added or removed as shown. Then move to the second to accept the consent agendas presented. All those in favor say aye. Question carries. And we go on to 5.0, new business. Our St. Helens High School ASB report. It's got yes for all of her. I'd like to introduce her. She gets to come here for our community. Welcome, bro. And she's good. She'll put you to bed. Then move to the second to accept the consent agendas presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Question carries. And we go on to 5.0, new business. Our St. Helens High School ASB report. It's got yes for all of her. I'd like to introduce her. She gets to come here for our community. Welcome, bro. And she's good. She'll put you to bed. Just you all together in one piece.
Hi, so my name is Brooke Oliver. I am the ASB Public Relations Officer at St. Helens High School. And this is just kind of an overview of what's been happening this month, October. And then just to highlight one thing that we did in September. So the one thing we did in September was the Welcome Back Event, which we did a field day. We've never done that before. Usually it's like a dance or something like that. But we wanted to try something different. And the student body really liked it. So that's something we're going to highlight again for next year. And that was the first thing that we attempted to do. And it was really big. And we had a really good turnout for that. So that's really good. Homecoming 2023 was just a few weeks ago. Saturday, it was on a Saturday. The total income from tickets sold was $9,740. And the total profit was $3,636.58. So that's a pretty big margin from last year. And then the Corps did a fundraiser for CASA. And we fundraised $979.25. So that was really good. And then the Think Pink Beat Blue Week. This year, we decided to support Martine Barnett and the Colon Cancer Coalition. We did fundraisers such as selling pink lemonade, Think Pink Football Game, as well as t-shirts. And that was really good this year. And then we also had a Think Pink Dance after the football game. It was $10 admission, cash only at the door. And that was a big turnout as well. We had a lot of people show up to that. So that's really good. And then during the halftime of the football game, we had a miracle minute, which is kind of just a few people from our leadership team would go out during halftime and try to just get as many cash donations as they can in a minute. And that was a really good turnout as well. I don't have an exact number on that yet. But we know that it was a lot more than last year, which is really good. We had a lot of student participation, which was great. And then what's next? So we're just starting working on Winter Spirit Week, Spirit Days for that. And then we're also starting our Winter Ball Prep. And that's all for the month of October.
Alright, well, then we go on to 5.2, our school report for our building administration. Who's going first? Okay. Well, where's my high school? Why don't we go on?
Great, good evening. Katie Weider, Principal of St. Helens High School. First, I want to share some successes that we have had at St. Helens High School. One recently, on October 17th, we ran our Testing and College and Career Day, which was a big success. We had a large turnout for all of our students who were testing. We offered a ninth grade kind of study hall intercession support for those students that needed to get that extra assistance from teachers. So we had them located in one part of the building. And then our 11th graders, if they were not taking the SAT, they participated in a financial reality fair sponsored by Inroads Credit Union. We had the CEO of Inroads came and talked about what it's like to be an executive in a financial institution and gave a little bit of information about that. We had lots of great pictures. If you watch the Good News video, Stacy had sent out some pictures of what students were doing. It was great to walk around and hear students say, "Oh, my gosh, I only make this much money. And I have one kid and one spouse. I don't have enough money for a two-bedroom apartment. So we're just going to all sleep in the same bed." Right? So there was a lot of kind of creative thinking around how to manage money in different scenarios. So it was great to see so many students engaged. Then they transitioned into our Career Speaker Series, where we had 14 guests from the community who all had a room assigned. And students got to choose which six they went around to within their 30-minute session. So I just want to share with you all of our community partners. So you can thank them if you see them around. We got a lot of really great feedback about their presentations. A lot of students that were interested in what they did. So we had one room that was designated for the military. So we had representatives from the Navy, from the Marine Corps, from the Army, that were all in the same room talking about different opportunities. Hoping Construction was there. St. Helens Police Department, Utenahogue was there. Mountain Hood Ski Patrol and EMTs. Dana Latrow from Realizing Art, which is a tattoo facility here in Columbia County. Last year, we had gotten feedback from students that they wanted to have more arts-type presenters. And so that was one that we invited. Letitia S. Juarez Tison, who is a public relations and marketing person. She's also the one that coordinates our county Dia de los Muertos celebration. Elena Schuman, who lives in Columbia County. She's actually the principal technical fashion designer for Nike. So she designs clothing. She actually zoomed in from New York. And so she joined us there. But she has dressed people like Kate Moss at Fashion Week. Give us work for Ralph Lauren. So our students got to work with someone who actually is a professional fashion designer. We also have Leah Chipwood from RE/MAX Real Estate. We have Western Heating and Cooling. We had David Fit from Les Schwab. Mo Williams, who is one of our coaches, but is also a software engineer from Nike. Kat Spurling from Columbia Health Services, who also teaches our health applications program. We have Kim Lehman, who is a photographer. So again, in the arts field. And we have Rachel Armitage, who's a former state senator. And I was just informed by one of our 11 great students who participated. Attending her session has actually inspired her to go into politics, which was not something she considered previously. So it was a very impactful day. Students did reflections, which go towards graduation requirements for career-related learning experiences. So they did four of those. So they did a lot of feedback on that. Talked about goal setting, what interests they have. And then that works towards diploma. So it was a great, great time. We also have some exciting athletics that are happening this week. If you did not see the girls soccer game last night, it was pretty exciting. We won 1 to 0. And that put us into the play-ins. So that means that our girls team is heading to Pendleton on Saturday for a 2 o'clock game. So a little bit, a little bit of a long trip. If we win that game, then we are into the playoffs. So this is the play-ins for girls soccer. Football, we are, we have one game left. That is this Friday at Seaside High School. If we win that game, we are then in third place. And we are in the state playoffs. So that's exciting. If we do not win, we are not in the playoffs. But that's kind of a make or break Friday. And then we also have Cross Country that is headed to Tillmook tomorrow. And we have a number of students who could qualify for state after that Cross Country meet as well. So lots of really good things happening there. We also have, I was honored to be able to be into an Abbott classroom today, where the students had talked a little bit about some current events that are going on with different wars that are happening around the world. And there has been a desire for our students to do something specifically related to supporting children or teens that are impacted by wars in general. So refugee organizations or other philanthropic organizations that focus on supporting kids and adolescents. So the classroom was structured in a way for students to identify, is there something that we can do here in St. Helens that supports other kids and teens that are impacted by these types of world events? So they did a research project into different organizations, rated them differently. Are they biased? Are they unbiased? Is there longevity? Is there, is, or how long have they been around? Are they credible? Like, how do they support them? What are their finances look like? And they rated all different types of organizations to see where they could chip in either fundraiser or do something active. So at the end of the day, their top three were Unicef, Red Crocs, and Amnesty International. So now they're going to dig into those a little bit more to see what other things that they want to learn about them and feel like they can do something good for the world. So it was really exciting to see that be so student-driven, but also identify how they can embed WICAR strategies within these types of research projects and then give something back to the community. So really demonstrating that serving our community dedication of art assets. So really exciting to see. And then what we're working on right now, we have an intervention time period that is happening every other day. And our intervention team is working on different ways we can make that more efficient and more effective and also collect data so we can see the impacts of those interventions over time. So that's a work in progress. But we did have a guest from Northwest Regional come out on Tuesday to talk about some of the services they offer to engage students with attendance and make sure that we're reading kids' needs where they are at. Lots of really exciting feedback.
Come on up.
Good evening. Ron Hurley, Principal at Plymouth High School, sharing our parking lot right next door. Lot of good things happening. I want to try to be friendly. We've recently had a U of O presenter come through our Gear Up program. And the cool thing as a result is I had three or four students that never thought that they would pursue college, let alone a place like U of O, sort of get hooked and want to have conversations with the presenter, get information, and then followed a lot of questions to me the following day. So just inspiring kids that never gave it a thought prior to that event. So that was pretty cool. We have, what I would say is an increase in student ownership, taking ownership. This is sort of amorphous because there's not, it's hard to put numbers to it and corn data. But kids are more and more increasing their response to poor choices in the moment and immediately catching themselves and apologizing. We had one teacher suggest during enrichment period, hey, do you have anybody that would appreciate apology letters or notes that wasn't directed any further than that? But I received and some others received some nice apology notes for earlier behaviors or decisions. And so that meant a lot for them to take that ownership. We have three, I don't want to say four, but I know three seniors that will be finishing up and graduating next quarter. They are just one or two grades shy. And so they all have plans for post-secondary roadmaps in front of them. So that's pretty cool and exciting. They're very excited to move on. As a change in something that we're pursuing, I was very fortunate to hit a couple conferences recently, the RTI Behavior Conference and then the Gear Up Conference. And, you know, I've said this to several people. I don't think it's over-exaggerating. These are the two best conferences that I think I've ever attended. So I am really jazzed to see what we can do with this information that we've acquired. With that, and I don't want to make Jessica nervous, but one of the presenters, I've sort of, we've started conversations. He's going to be coming to Portland soon. He's got like seven connections in Portland. And he said, "We can do a school sliding scale, et cetera," because I just thought, boy, you know, for students and staff to bring in and hear his hour-long message is priceless. So hopefully that will come to fruition. And just excited to see where I can walk with everyone to take some of these new ideas and information forward. So looking forward for good and a lot of improvements quarter two in progress. So, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, he's hiding that there. Okay. Come on up. In between, excuse me, ladies, we're blocking.
Originally gap between middle school and high school. Martin Hayman, Principal at Virtual Academy. I'm meeting with staff today, talked to a couple of them. And they're feeling really valued and supported by the school district. Actually told me that they feel like that they finally have a principal that is invested in the school and wants to improve the school. So that was really encouraging to me. We're encouraging staff to create engagement activities. Make sure that they're on Wednesday nights at our board meetings. But we're going to have a, we're going to have a science, a science night over at the middle school, where students will come in right after our regular kids leave. So they'll have two, two different sessions. One right after school, and then one in the evening. So that if there's transportation, it's a barrier. Air should be blown by that to deal with it. Then we have another teacher who wants to do so, cooking classes and stuff like that. So we're going to work with them and see if we can utilize their kitchen after school hours. They're also going through and analyzing the FIBI Matrix with me and how it aligns to the Virtual Academy teacher's responsibilities. So they're having input on that. We're developing a policy procedure handbook so that we can get that policy verified. We've also started using our, switching our staff roles around a little bit. And we're using one of our staff members who has a lower class size to actually do all the tracking of attendance. So that frees up the other teachers to spend more of their time focusing on how to get students engaged and get them the support that they need to get back on track. And then what they're working on right now is during their P L T time, they're trying to figure out how to engage students who might not have the best support network at home besides just emailing and making phone calls and things like that. Because students sitting at home, they're more likely that they're doing like a video game if no one's watching than actually in their school here. So how can we get them engaged? Have any questions?
Keep up the good work. Are you coming on up, Mr. Prince?
Evening, too, Mark. I'm Chris Welling, Principal of St. Helens Middle School. And our Riverhawk Report today starts with a success that I'd like to highlight around athletics. Recently, we had our Athletes of the Season for the Fall Celebration. We, this was a great partnership of some community groups. So the Village Inn is where it was hosted. Their partnership with the Boosters and then our athletic director, Alan Hollandbeck, they put on a pretty amazing end of the season event for our students. Our students that were recognized as Athlete of the Season walked away with frames, awards, pictures, and really cool, just, you know, school gear to represent their experience as an athlete. And I just want to recognize Alan as our athletic director and what a tremendous effort he's put into developing our athletic program. It's really centered around the student experience. And it's, it's come a long ways under his leadership. We now have an academic eligibility program that's been very successful. And 90% of our athletes who got into probation during the season came out of probation before they, before they were restricted from competition. So that was really cool to see. We had three athletes who didn't and who continued their probation for a certain period of time. But overall, a phenomenal program. And it's continuing to grow and develop under his leadership. The next success I would like to highlight is really tied to RTI and the development of some multi-tier systems to support at our school. And we're really trying to lay the foundation for good tier-one instruction and good tier-one data collection and analysis of our students' abilities. And we implemented our universal screener, which is E C C B M district-wide. That's what we use. But we did it in a way to improve student morale and interest in actually performing well so that we could get really good data. And so we did a lot of push-in work into our platforms to promote this assessment, to promote performance on this assessment. And, and they did very well. We got a 96% completion rate. So almost all of our students in round one completed it, which is really good. Much better than past numbers. I'll not share those at this time. But then in addition to having this really strong universal screener to collect data on students who might be high-risk, we also learned a lot from some of these RTI conferences. And one of them is how to create really good documents that are comprehensive and put a lot of data that paints a really strong picture of our students' skills or deficits or strengths. And so with this universal screener data and then these tracking documents, we've been able now to really look ballistically at students and specifically target students who are high-risk. And so just an example, the E C C B M math screener. And what it put out for us is we have 149 students currently in the middle school rates six through eight who are considered high-risk at their grade level for not passing math or not meeting standards at their grade level. That's a significant number that we have to address. And so we went to work looking at how can we address that through core instruction? And what we did is we developed a tier through, a tier-three math intervention course. And so students now who are in that 149, actually today, teachers took this data tracking system and all these data points on students from behavior, like behavior referrals, failing grades, attendance, math scores, reading scores. And they're teasing through and finding the top 18 in our place in this course, starting second quarter. So 18 students across rates six through eight, so in multi-grade class, will be placed in this tier-three class to start second quarter. And really, this class is going to focus on, it's called procedural and conceptual math, but it's really going to focus on intervening and, I guess, fixing those gaps that are there from elementary school. And this could be basic number sense issues that some of these students have all the way up to solving equations. And we're going to do some really intense intervention for nine weeks with these students and hope to close those gaps and allow them then out of that class and back into an enrichment course. And then we'll start with another 18 the next quarter. And we're going to try to tackle these 149 students and really get them ready for high school. So I'm excited about that tier-three course. I'm excited about all the things that have been developed to support identifying students for intervention. It's a really good start to this year for our support students.
Thank you, Sarah. Alright, that's it. Come on up, Martine. Which one of you is going first? Alphabetical?
It's good evening, school board. Martine Barnett, Principal of Columbia City Library. And I want to thank you for approving the garden grant and consent agenda. I'm really excited and hopeful that we'll get those funds so that we can put a garden in at our school. And the gardens focus on native plant species and pollinators rather than food production. But kids will learn the importance of all that in the cycle of food production. We feel like that's a more sustainable approach because our gardens yield produce during the summer when we're not there, which is not as much fun. So I think it'll be a really great opportunity from our community partnerships and lots of learning. So I'm hopeful for that. We should know, I think, through December. We also, another community partnership we had today was a fairy garden project put on at our local Columbia City Library in partnership with Master Gardeners. They, it was on a sign-up basis for our students after school. And they were able to build fairy gardens to take home. So some really great pictures coming from that. It looks like it was a big success. We also had our first, actually our second grand lodge today. So I think last time I talked to you about lodge, which is our small groups of students that are across grade levels who meet with an adult in the building. Every other week now, we're doing a grand lodge where we come together as a whole school. So kind of a whole school assembly, but we sit in one giant circle and do games and activities together, which is really awesome. A really great sense of community and belonging in that space. Fun to experience and excited for that to continue all school year. And the thing that we're working on, Susan Donovan and I were able to attend the RTI Behavior Conference in Seattle that others have mentioned. And we're just very excited to first tighten up some of the systems that we already have that are close to being really effective. But if we shore things up, we know that they can be more effective for more students. And then to build on that with first our tier. Funds, of course. Yep, our tier two, which is excited to continue that.
Thank you.
Good evening. Shree Martin, I'm called Lucy Carr. Just wanted to share with you three things we're pretty excited about and feel like have been very successful. And the first thing would be, we have three staff members who just went to the RTI conference. And you've heard it a couple of times before, but that, that really, that focus on the media and that focus on that tiered system. And it really goes in line with what we're trying to work on as far as procedures, routines, culture of our school. And we are really excited as a school to delve into that. Our Guiding Coalition has already set aside one of their two days each month that we meet to really get into that work. And so that our professional learning teams can structure really work on school-wide, what do our systems look like? And that we're really saying the same things and giving that same message to students. And so that we can have that positive impact. Another big thing that is community-related is our PTO. This last weekend had their Halloween carnival. This is their second year, and it was a great success. There was lots of smiles and happy faces. So kind of shout out to our PTO for their hard work of doing that and bringing in not only our families, but families across St. Helens and community members to help with that. So that was a wonderful thing. Our next thing is that we have students and help with teaching and learning. We have our new student teacher. And so we're very excited to get that back into our rotation. Just the wealth of knowledge that our new student teachers providing for kids and their excitement of having a special time in which it's really building on their thinking skills and how to create and those engineering pieces. And we're excited for in the near future when art is happening to that. So we're looking forward to that. What we're working on right now is we're doing a little bit of reorganization in our SELC program. And we're excited as we do the routines and the procedures. We're excited about that work. It's hard work, but we're very excited about making sure that our specialized programs are there very fast.
Thank you, hon.
Hi, everybody. I'm Ann Alson, the view, Principal at McBride at the Seale. We have quite a few things to celebrate at Pail at McBride, I think since I've last been here to talk with you. We have put together a number of community activities, community engagement activities in evenings at McBride that have been really successful. Last night, we hosted families in our Camp Read-a-Lot. And we had tents set up. We had teacher readers. We did smores. We had games and lots of families. We had over 100 families that came last night to participate in conjunction with our book fair. So it was a really, it was a, I'm not sure how much we've earned yet for the book fair, but all of that is wonderful exposure for students. There's a wide variety of excitement around reading a new book yesterday and taking it into the Camp Read-a-Lot and sitting around at our campfire and enjoying some marshmallow fluff on smores. So that was really fun. Our PTO has worked tenaciously on a number And hosted a family fall festival last Friday night where we put on a carnival, and man was it fun. There was cotton candy and hot dogs and tickets galore and games, and we have quite a few teachers participate as well. And so I just wanted to share that really fun event with you that we were able to do. And just happy faces, you know? They come in in their costumes and they have their pumpkin pumpkins. The other great piece that we've been working on that I want to highlight is how we're supporting our community needs. Our PTO had noticed basic needs for clothing and shoes and necessities, and so we cleared out their old closets, as it were, with all of their old materials. We moved that out of the central part of the building and we created a space where we're going to just keep essentials that teachers can access confidentially and privately and discreetly for students when they notice that there might be a need in a certain area. So it's stocked. We have a junior PTO that has been established, and so young leaders that are out going to local hotels and asking for donations, of course, of parents and seeing if we can get shampoos and soaps and things like that. It's a real bright spot, and it's large in part due to the large furniture shuffling that we were able to accomplish. And I'm really proud that our stage is all cleared off now. It's looking beautiful. We have a couple more things to surplus, but overall, our spaces are starting to really support the kind of partnerships that we want in the community and making it feel like a real homeschool. So that's really wonderful. An area that we're working on, thank you for helping support us getting to that conference last week. I know a lot of my colleagues have spoke about that, how powerful that was. For us at McBride, what it means is we get to really examine our tier-two supports for students around behavior. And so we're talking about behavior, we're talking about academic behavior, and we're also talking about social behavior and social interaction with students on the playground. We don't have athletics, but we're on the playground every day at recess time, working on how to teach students to resolve conflicts peacefully, how to have safe hands, safe bodies, safe feet. I say that lots of times during the day. And so that conference really helped us kind of set a framework for how we want to address and reteach and support students through that learning development, because that's exactly what it is. And so that has been, that's going to be our map of work for the next month or so. So I'm excited to report back to you, let you know how that's going. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy Boylan. I'm the Director of Early Learning. So for the last month, we got to finally go on a field trip to the pumpkin patch. It poured down rain for the first trip, and they didn't care. They came back soaked in the happiest of me, dragging their pumpkins in. One of them came in and was so excited to show me, and it's this green, like looked half-melted pumpkin with the stem leg half off. He was so excited that he was able to carry that pumpkin the whole way back. And so we talked all about the differences of pumpkins and how they all look different, and he was very proud of that pumpkin. The second day, it was beautiful sky and sunny for the other trip, but it was nice to be able to have a lot of parent support this time with not having the immunization requirement. A lot of those parents that had volunteered in the past were able to come back. And so we had a large number of parents excited to go on our trips this year. So many that we had to start telling people, wait till the next trip. So our advanced ECE students at the high school have now started bussing over to Columbia City this year to do their practicum and get their dual credit by doing observations and assessments with our Columbia City preschool, our autographs. And so twice a week, they get to bus over, and they, this semester, they are doing lessons with the kids. And so they get to do small group, and they do activities with them and see how they go, and then go back to the school and have brainstorm of what they should do differently, how it was successful. And then next semester, the plan that the other ECE class will come and do observations. And so we've decided that our second field trip to Omsley, we're going to do on the last day of the semester that those kids will be there, so that their sixth ECE buddies will get to chaperone and be part of saying goodbye to their buddies by going to Omsley. The teens might be more excited than our preschoolers about that trip. So I think the one thing that I'm currently working on is trying to put together scenarios because we would like to expand our preschool to Los Inclac next year, because we have a preschool at Columbia City, you know, preschool at McBride. So the next step is definitely for us to have one at our Los Inclac location correctly. There's a start, so we'd like to also have a school district one there, so that when our mom and family, they can go to the actual school that their children will be enrolled in for kindergarten, to make that transition even more smooth. So I'm putting different scenarios together to meet just how to figure out which one looks the best.
So one thing that's important to note, the elementary key principles in partnership with teachers learning, allowing to add art and scheme teacher to the rotation, then expand options like our secondary schools, but also provide additional time for our teachers to have that common time to work on to that art and design stuff. So we will hard search long and long for some quality candidates, and that does pretty many people coming in, and now we're building them into the scale of the big side of our lives. Wanted to share that.
Before we move on, I think tonight is the first time in the city that I've been doing this, that I've heard preschool, rock and roll, and many similar shared language. As we continue to move forward, we kind of get there, we all, we're saying that it's happened. Kids need consistency. Do they need, it doesn't matter what building they go to, it doesn't matter what age that they have, our consistent aspects that they need to be able to move forward and be successful. Still, with the high school, we understand all of those things, and continue to move towards the series, which is a place. So I really appreciate everything that I can do with it. Frankly, I can't say what I have to say. But thank you, Scott, for organizing all of that. And thank you, leadership, for continuing to work together amongst yourselves. Especially with our next business.
All right, well, thank you. All right, well, then we will go on to the next 5.3, which is the Northwest Regional ESD Services Report with Mr. Matt Doyle. Back in our place again.
Welcome back. Thank you. So my name is Matt Doyle. I have been serving as the, our Columbia County Service Center Administrator at the Northwest Educational Service District since July 1. Our office is just down the road. So we are the largest educational service district in Oregon. There are 20 educational service districts, or 19 educational service districts in Oregon. We're the largest. And we serve four counties, Clatsop, Columbia, Tillamook, and Washington Counties. So educational service districts provide extra supports to school districts, particularly smaller school districts that may not have the staff and resources to provide interventions for students. We do have IAs in preschool promise and Head Start classrooms. We also provide early childhood interventions for about 230 children, zero to five, in Columbia County. I have a staff of about 25 teachers, IAs, occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech-language pathologists, who evaluate and then provide support and interventions for children zero to five. We know how critically important it is for us to help kids, give them the support they need early, so that they walk into kindergarten, they're as successful as possible from day One of the other things that I do as part of my position is I'm a convener of people, school personnel throughout the five districts we serve, who serve kids in various capacities. I convene the county superintendents once a month, where the superintendents can get together in person and talk about problems of practice and how to solve those problems with the help and support of the ESD. I also convene meetings, gatherings of county special education directors, school counselors, and also family partnership organizations as well, like Healthy Families, CHS, and other really critical organizations. They get together and they share resources, and they share challenges and solutions with each other, so that everyone can work together and align their resources, so that they're not working in silos and they're able to serve families in Columbia County more seriously, so seamlessly. I just wanted to come in and introduce myself and the role that I have supporting Columbia County, particularly St. Helens. And I'll just be coming into school districts throughout the county on a semi-regular basis just to build relationships and let you know and see how I can serve school districts better. So just wanted to introduce myself and say thank you for quite a great partnership the ESD has, particularly with St. Helens School District. Thank you.
Tell them to put my name and number to call me. We'll have to talk that way. We'll catch up. All right. Okay, so let's see, let's go on to 5.4 then, our policy updates.
Yeah, so this is a first reading, and I thought I could, as a first reading, kind of go through really the highlighting changes. We often see this change to board policy, particularly current board policy with the end of legislative session. So that's what we have here. So the first policy that we're looking at is the BDA, and that comes to us, the changes via House Bill 2805 to House Bill 2806. And that is around mandatory training for school board members around other meeting laws. So we have that in process. All of you have attended multiple trainings in the summer and fell caught up in November. Those additional trainings that we had as well, so our board, that's practices. The next policy is BDC, the executive session. The addition to this, this is again from House Bill 2805 and House Bill 2806. This is mainly around adding the topic of security to executive sessions. So during an executive session, you know, those are very limited to what we can talk about. Things cannot be voted on in an executive session. That has to be done in a public meeting. But during the recent pandemic and other concerns, safety has been a highlighted focus for many school boards. Cybersecurity is something now that we can talk about. We obviously would want to in a public setting, talk about how we're making our data network secure. Likewise, how we're securing other areas for our school district that might be sensitive. Those topics can now be discussed during executive session. And then also, if there's a threat against the school board, we can also have a discussion in executive session about that as well. So that's the additions, changes for you to review. The next policy is policy EFA, Global Wellness Program. This comes, changes come via House Bill 3199, and it's an adjustment to the number of PE hours, particularly at, I think it's elementary. I believe it's down, they shifted it down because of facilities, staffing, and logistics. The bar that was set for the number of PE minutes required for elementary and middle school children is challenging for me. What I think is interesting to note that with reading and math and all those other types of subjects, PE is the only subject where there's requiredness. And the requirement changed from the average throughout the year from 225 minutes down to 150 minutes per week. We meet the criteria, have met the criteria through a variety of different ways, but it does give us a little bit more convenience on how we spread our schedule. So that's the other piece of the first reading. Then we've got policy GCBDF slash GDDBF, state family medical leave insurance. This changed again based on the new family medical leave law that all businesses are not part of. This aligns our policy to the new law. We, as a district, had an option of opting in to a state-funded program. We chose not to, we felt, and could receive an as good or better service at a better rate, get more provision through an outside insurance agency. So we opted to do that. This policy aligns that as well. And also, the next policy, TC, EDF and GDDBF, state family medical leave insurance. Both of those are one of the same policy changes. The next one is GCPC slash GDPC, retirement of staff. This is a change from House Bill 2296, recognizing the significant staffing issues that not only school districts, but other organizations face across the country and the state. This allows us to reemploy retired educators up to, right now, 2034. So that provides us with additional leeway to hire staff. What's great about this allows to hire experienced staff that we generally know have been successful. And then the final one is LBE, Public Charter School, and this comes from House Bill 3204. This is a movement across the state to eliminate the restriction on the number of students that a district can stop going to charter schools or leave a district. The cap is 3%. So if more than 3% of the school population wants to leave for a charter school, that that'd be a specific charter school, if any charter school in the district could put a cap on that. As a district, we've chosen not to cap that. I'm quite certain we're a little bit over 3%, but I think as a board, our feeling has always been if folks don't want to be in our district and want to find education in another organization, then they're welcome to do that. We're always here waiting for the return. If the board would like to discuss moving to holding that to a hard 3%, that would be something for us to talk about during the work session, but I think our current practice is pretty sound. That wraps up the policy updates for the first reading.
Your question, I usually get like recommended or required, and I don't see any of that noted anymore. So are they just?
Let's see that on that packet. After they listen kind of the end of the phrase, it's required, right on top of the receipt.
Oh, I got you. On the end, they're doing the.
Yeah.
Okay, so they change.
And the ones presented to you are from policy class, so they are, you know, recommended access services that you would be.
Okay.
What I'm impressed is how much they get to cut out of those. We never got to do.
I have a refresh, maybe this is the right time, because if they have something to say, it's the chance to say it.
Are we coming up to the next thing?
We're the superintendent.
Mr. Superintendent. Explain what's going on a little bit there.
I was looking that.
Should I ask a question? So you can, should I ask you some part of a question? Or are we?
Some superintendent.
So the superintendent, that's right.
But that could be a fun game.
That could be a fun game.
We all want to go.
So as, generally speaking, when we have board meetings, this is a business meeting, and when people address the board, we want them to come up to the microphone. The board generally would not reach out and talk with the audience. However, as an educational opportunity and experience, and we have some very experienced board members who have served on multiple roles for multiple years, Mr. Amos, I think this, I think this would be the right time to break the protocol.
Okay. Is there any more to skip now?
Yeah.
Okay.
The whole thing is, this is the opportunity actually for visitors to address the board. So if you wanted to say something, we don't debate you, but if you had a topic you wanted.
You are skipping the superintendent's. You are skipping the superintendent's report.
Oh, am I skipping that? Oh, I was going to jump in there.
If we were for visitors to address the board, now you can go on.
I'll wait till he's. You have to wait till he's.
We are, we are taking that opportunity right now though. But if we were for visitors to address the board.
Okay, yeah, 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 yeah. So if you wanted to bring up something to the board, you could, but we would not necessarily respond back. It's not a time to debate the board. But if you had a concern from the high school or you said, hey, you know, I've been talking to my friends and this is, or this is something that has, the first one is that we had was something that's not on our agenda at all. You look at our agenda and say, hey, I got a real concern at the high school or in school generally. That's the time to bring that up. This is a time coming up to address the board about something that you've heard tonight that's on the agenda. And you say, you know, I heard about this policy or some such thing and I want to know about it. But what we really want to do is welcome you to our board meeting. We want you to see what it is. It seems somewhat, it's different for a regular board business meeting than it is for a work session. In a work session, we have a lot of discussion among ourselves. Here, we're informing the public and talking and approving things that are there. So it's more of a report session. For a work session, we go to the hard work of being board members and maybe we'll talk about those policies and argue about them a little bit before, because we'll have another reading before we pass them. So that's a, that's a part of what is being on the board. We also encourage you to come to our budget hearings later in the spring, especially if you're 18. We had two students last year that were 18 years old and were on our budget committee. And did they have a major impact on how dollars are spent in the school district? No. But were they better informed about how, where all those dollars went and why they were spent the way they were? Yes, and they were interested students.
And maybe the opposite, they informed us in how some programs were utilizing that funding and that they wanted to keep it.
Yeah, so there is an influence there. So there are opportunities for you to serve actually, and if you're, once you're 18, to serve on a board like this. This is what a board does. This is just a portion. This is the public portion of what you see. It's also public for our work sessions, but very few people come because it's not as participatory. It's for us to do work among ourselves. And this is the opportunity for you to hear the good work that we've been doing. And so that's, that's a lot of this. A board meeting is just that. It's a board meeting to make decisions if there are ones to be made. But the debate about the decisions often happens in a work session, which is another meeting. So those are things that you can kind of get a perspective of what's really going on. And what does a board meeting do? It's very different. And it's different for our planning commission too. We have hearings on a planning commission. We hear, we don't debate. That's really hard because lawyers will come in and want to raise all kinds of issues. We thank them for their input and then the board makes the decision. And that's, that's what a board does. But this is, this is a business meeting, just running the business, accepting the financial reports and all of those sorts of things. Did that help you, Mr. Musin?
That helps a lot. You know, just they need it a little bit. I always hope one of them has an issue.
Although, he did say issue, but you cannot complain about staff.
Correct.
So you can complain about pretty much anything else, but the chair will cut you off if you complain about.
Yeah, if you don't like Mr. Musin, that's just too bad. He's your teacher.
You can tell them that, but just not during the board. You can also access your student representative that sits on our board, who built and that highly encourage Lucy down.
Yeah, Lucy has been, missed a couple of days of school and it's not here, but she is a board member.
So if there was extra credit, each one of the admin gets assigned, like three things that are going well, three things that should have work. So if one of you wanted to come up and tell us three things that are going well in your, in your school and three things that could use some work, I bet you, you'd get some extra credit.
Or come to the next meeting.
No, no takers.
Check off a second one.
You could plan them back.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's call it back. Bang the gavel and put it back to order, but thank you for asking. It's, it's what we're doing.
I do have one question though. Mr. Musin, aren't they supposed to stay for an entire hour?
Yes. Last an hour, they guys stay an hour, right?
At least two.
Oh, now they're there.
Just thought I'd point that one out.
Well, we're about done, but you do want to hear what the superintendent had to say and then.
Yeah. So we're going to turn it over to this 5.5, Mr. Superintendent. Scott, stop.
I wish I could say I've got some riveting information to share with you, but this is a compliance piece that I'm sharing right now. So the state has something that's called Division 22. And Division 22s are all the rules and requirements that the state says we have to do as a school district. As a school district, we take some time, review those, let's see if we're in compliance. And they provide us with a very basic worksheet. And it says the rule, has the rule of the law inside, the status, whether we're in compliance, explanation of evidence, and then if there's a corrective action. This year, we're in compliance with all rules and laws, those are Division 22. The explanation is pretty standard. It's preloaded for us, the district has all requirements for this rule. And there's no corrective action for us taken. Now, on every one of these laws, are we doing amazing work? No, we're not. But we're doing some pretty good work in terms of, but there's always room to grow. But I think as the board, we're very proud of the school district and film reports. I appreciate your comment about the focus on academics that, that. The requirement is for this to be presented during a public meeting, so the requirement is now complete. We have a question on.
So like we have this conversation last year, we don't have the ability to change the way we, of demonstration of rules and skills. Correct. We don't have.
Yes, we as a board don't have the ability over our state's convention, believing this is a requirement. We can put in rules beyond what the state requires with the Division 2. That's something we've interested in, we've talked about at that board meeting. I think the, the spin on that, that news agencies like to push out is, oh my gosh, they're not requiring standards for schools. That's not accurate. We have state standards that our kids read, that our teachers, old students accountable for. That's how they earn their grades. So, you know, do we want to put something else in there? Absolutely. We could do that. I would suggest that because we have our state standards and we meet our state standards that earn grades in our high school courses, then essentially they're meeting those essential skills. But absolutely something for a board to discuss because it does, it does get a lot of good clicks on social media. You say school districts are being examined.
And we get text that we shouldn't do something.
And, you know, I think as a school district and the high schools, we'd be more happy to have this conversation, but that might look like.
I think clarification, if you're still in expectation to meet standards, is happening.
Absolutely.
It versus how did that be answered, or how did that one, so I think that conversation may need to be placed. That was a big problem. I just wanted to clarify that.
Any other questions? Okay, that concludes my report.
That's great. All right, well, then we're going to go on to 6.0 officially, visitors to address the board. And this is the time for public comment on agenda. No remarks. All right, well, then we're going to move on to 7.0, which is the upcoming meeting input. November 15th, 2023 is our next regular board meeting at 6:30 PM. And after that, I think we also, in the meantime, we have a conference and I don't think there's anything else, right?
I will not need your support. Brian and I will be at the RGI.
RGI, right? Okay.
I might actually not be here.
Don't be trying.
I don't know. I have to double check on that one.
Well, I can't guarantee what's going to happen while you're going then.
No, I will, I will not be here as well.
Oh, man, that's it, guys.
Mr. Musin's name is forgotten.
And that's the regular board meeting. Okay, regular board meeting party. Oops, did I, nevermind. All right, well, with that then, I am sure.